Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the study session for the City Council for the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for July 2nd, 2018. We'll start our meeting with citizen comment on any items on the agenda. And I don't have anyone signed up at this time, but I'd like to open it up to anyone in the council chambers who would like to speak on any item on the agenda. We don't seem to have any speakers tonight, so we will move on to item number one, the sale of park property at 38th and Johnson. And Mr. Goff, do you want to go through a report?
Sure. Well, I don't, but Joyce Manoring will. But I'll help answer any questions if you have any.
All right, Ms. Manley, please proceed.
Thank you. So we're here tonight to get a consensus from council if you would like to move forward with the sale of park property. In 2000, let's see, when we, let me just say, when we developed Discovery Park, this, I have the diagram up on the screen. This area, this CP2, it was purchased with park property or open space money. And as the park master plan was developed, it was determined that, looking forward, that this, if this were retained and at one point combined with this piece, the corner would be more developable for commercial development. So that was the way we proceeded at the time when the master plan was developed. That development also involved selling this piece, this L-shaped, or whatever you want to call this shaped piece, to the Applewood Cafe because they were parking on park property and they just, I don't know if any of you remember that, they just didn't have a big enough site to park and meet the demand. And we did some trading to get some right-of-way in here. So cleaned up the corner, obtained right-of-way, sold them some property, and then this has remained park property. So we do have an opportunity at this time to move forward with selling it. There's a developer interested in the corner, and we want to get council consensus on whether this is something you'd be interested in doing. The sale of park property does involve what we'd call a supermajority vote, so it has to be all eight councilperson by charter. And I have that piece of the charter in the memo for you. So I'm happy to answer any other questions or cover a little more background if you're interested.
All right. Do we have questions? Mr. Rann?
Oh, thank you. Can you give me some background on the sale of the property, how that was advertised, who all was interested?
The city was approached by a developer that was working with Apple Ridge Cafe, and we have been approached, I guess, at different times. And it's all whoever is, whoever does approach, and they don't approach me directly, they usually go through our economic development manager or Patrick. We state that the property is available if consolidated with Apple Ridge Cafe. So, I don't know, do you want to address the developer and his working with Apple Ridge and has now approached us?
Yeah, I can tell you what I know of now, and we've reached out to him to let him know we're going to discuss this this evening and asked how much information they wanted to share publicly at this point. Unfortunately, they're on vacation, so we haven't heard back. But, so I'll try to keep it as general as possible. So, yeah, we were approached, the city was approached a couple of different times, and this time it's gone farther than the others, but we were approached by a developer that was interested in redeveloping that corner. The Apple Ridge site is not big enough for their proposed redevelopment, so they've been working with Apple Ridge Cafe to relocate them, and they found a location to relocate them in that same area. So they are negotiating an agreement with them to relocate them, and they're negotiating an agreement with a future tenant for that site. It hasn't been, and we've done, we did an appraisal of the property. They are willing to pay appraisal. I think it was in your memo, right? Six hundred thousand is what the property was appraised as. And as the memo states, the property was originally purchased with Jefferson County open space funds, and so the money would have to go back into the open space budget to be used for park purposes.
Okay. When was that appraised?
About a year ago, and then we're doing, having an update to make sure it's still the same, and I don't know if the update's actually been completed yet, but if there's any major change, we would have to, we'd try, we'd get them to meet their appraised value.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? Ms. Dozeman?
So I would be open to this idea, but I would prefer to see the new appraisal rate, and because six hundred thousand dollars for that property seemed a little low for our market area, so...
It's a pretty good number, actually.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, because I looked at that and I was like, it's been a year, so when do you think the appraisal would be completed?
I'll have to check with Steve Art. Steve was asking for an update. They were just going to do an update, not a full new appraisal, because it was just done within the last year. They don't really anticipate any change, but it should be, it's under, I think it's under, it's being done. Do you think, Joyce, have you talked to Steve about it recently?
No, I just know that we said that, we requested that they update the appraisal before we move forward. It was completed in March of 2017, so...
So we'll have that information before it comes to vote?
Yeah, yeah, this will have to come back for former, formal approval, so...
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Ms. Ware. As it relates to the property being utilized or dedicated towards the parks department, is there any covenant or other restriction on the title to the property related to that park use?
No, when we completed the first transaction, we removed what we call the reverter clause, which Jefferson County always places on property that they co-purchase. And at the time, there was a, Jefferson County had a bond that they were working with, helping communities, cities, districts buy property, and they were sharing in the purchase price. So when we did the first transaction during the Discovery Park development, they removed their reverter clause. We traded them the same amount of land, not only on this corner, but all of the right-of-way up Kipling, on the west side of the estate fence, because if Kipling widens, that'll make that transaction simpler. And we traded them for the Baugh property. And they put a reverter clause on the Baugh property, which already has a historic, state historic park covenant on it. So now it has two property encumbrances, but it's also on the National Historic Register, so it seemed like, you know, a sound decision. And now this is free and clear for the City of Wheat Ridge to sell, and the sale of the property will go into just the Wheat Ridge Open Space Fund. It's not, won't be shared with the county.
So the proceeds from the sale would go into the Wheat Ridge Open Space Fund versus Jeffco, and the monies that we used to purchase this property initially with Jeffco Open Space Funds?
It was a 25-75 split.
So, but the money that we used from Jeffco, does that have to be repaid?
No, it does not, because we let them put their reverter clause on the Baugh property, so they have no real estate interest in the property.
Okay. And then, as far as the development itself that's being considered, is this a speculative development, or what's the basis for the commercial development that's...
No, they have a tenant that they're negotiating with, and I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I have permission to release, release that. We tried to get ahold of them. Obviously, we'll have that information before this comes back, but they have a retail tenant that they're looking, a single user for that corner.
And then, as far as the sale of real estate by the city, is there a procedure or process that we go through to announce the sale of a potential property or the listing of that property versus just doing one-off with a particular developer? Or how do we go about the dissolution of real property?
We didn't, in this case. I don't think there's any regulations around that in code or charter. We, again, as Joyce mentioned, we intentionally carved off this piece for a future redevelopment and just kind of waited until the development community came with a project, and we worked with whoever came with us. We were notified, I think contacted by several different developers with different projects, just, they never went through, and this one finally, looks like it might actually go through. So, yeah, we didn't advertise widely that it is for sale.
Thank you. Additional questions? Mr. Fitzgerald?
I don't see any of the comments, so I would ask for consensus that we move this forward.
Well, actually, I had a question, if you would. Would there be a way to, what if this developer were to acquire this piece of property and then not proceed with the development? Is there a way to sort of make contingent the sale of this property upon, you know, upon closing or upon redevelopment?
Yeah, I think we can definitely do that. We, it's still a little bit up in the air, but we wanted to get this in front of you before it got too much closer, just to get some general information to you, so you understand what's going on. There's a chance this may not go through, but it looked like it was getting very close, so we said, let's just get this in front of City Council, so they're aware of it. They're still, again, working, they don't, I don't believe they have a signed agreement with Apple Ridge Cafe on moving their site to another location, so they're still working on that. But if that falls through, this may fall through. So I think, yeah, we can make any sale contract contingent on closing or whatever we need that to be.
Okay. Ms. Schaefer?
I just wanted to add some historic perspective to this, because I was on council when the city purchased this land. We had the bond money that she talked about. We bought a piece of property in each district, and where Discovery Park is was the one that they bought in District Three. And the lot number two, there's nothing on there now. The vision for that was to, because it's kind of a drainage area, that there would be a pond created there with a boardwalk and a little gazebo and maybe fish, I don't know. But that was, that was the vision for that plot of ground, because it wasn't so close to the street and kind of removed from the park, and that it would be just a real passive natural use. So I just wanted you all to know that.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I'd like to ask for consensus that we move this forward.
Looks like we have consensus to move it forward. Thank you. Our next item is item number two. This is the Yarrow Gardens Metropolitan District. And, Mr. Goff, do we have a presentation on this?
We do. We have the, yep, we have several, several folks here. I'll let them introduce themselves, but this is the Yarrow Gardens project that came to council recently for rezoning and subdivision plats. They mentioned this during their presentation, I believe, when they were in front of council last time, that they were looking at creating a metropolitan district to serve this new development. So they're here tonight to explain why they're asking for that. State statute is pretty clear on the process to create a metropolitan district, and it does require City Council approval of a service plan. So they're here this evening, thanks Joyce, to give a presentation. And I'll turn over to Kristen.
Please, Kristen.
So my name is Kristen Bear. I'm with the law firm of White Bear Ankle, and we are representing the petitioner in regard to the service plan that's being proposed for you. I have some general information on districts that I thought might be helpful for council, as well as some more specific information relative to the service plan that's been submitted. Also with me tonight is a representative developer. I know that you have recently considered some development approvals specifically, but certainly to the extent that you have further questions about Thrive or the development specifically, he can certainly answer those for you. Okay, so first, for purposes of special districts, this is being proposed as a Title 32 district. Title 32 is a section of the Colorado Revised Statutes. It would be organized as a quasi-municipal corporation and political subdivision of the state of Colorado. Districts are used in the state to provide infrastructure, but are primarily used for purposes of financing a component part of the project. Over and above what the district is able to finance, the developer still goes out and gets conventional financing for purposes of putting in both the private infrastructure and the public infrastructure that can't be financed through the district. There are over 1,500 Title 32 metropolitan districts that exist in the state of Colorado. This is primarily because we've seen growth, and I have a slide relative to the growth, but we've seen a lot of growth because neither cities nor counties put in this infrastructure. It is the responsibility of the developer specifically, and in the context of other governmental entities with the advent of Tabor, it's become much more difficult for cities or counties to add to the financing capability for the public infrastructure. So districts can actually issue debt on a tax-exempt basis for the public infrastructure itself, and they're afforded all of the governmental powers and immunities and privileges through Title 32 and other sections of the Colorado Revised Statutes. Title 32 gives very broad authorization to districts. What we see in service plans is a tethering down or some restrictions relative to what districts can do. The service plan is the operative document, and so as we put parameters in place, the district can't do everything that's authorized by Title 32, but rather what's authorized specifically by the service plan. So this is a little slide that the Colorado Division of Local Government has, and it shows the growth of special districts in Colorado from 97 to 2016. And you see a pretty sharp uptick until 2008, when the economy went a little bit flat and development kind of stalled out, but then you see it rising again in 2015 and 16, and even further through 2018. So in terms of statutory authorization, this is the Title 32 statutory authorization relative to what districts can do. They can finance, construct, operate, and maintain all of these types of improvements. This is obviously subject to the development approvals that you all put in place that are specific to who is going to own, operate, and maintain, and have those responsibilities through that development approval process. The service plan, again, is an authorizing document. It doesn't supplant or change what you do as part of development approvals. So Title 32 districts are a little bit different than HOAs. HOAs are organized as nonprofit corporations, and they're subject to laws that specifically govern HOAs. They can limit membership and use of their facilities because they are a private entity, and they're typically responsible for covenant control, architectural control. Several years ago, districts under Title 32 were authorized to provide covenant enforcement and architectural control. And we are proposing those authorizations as part of the service plan. Contrary to an HOA, a district, again, is a quasi-municipal corporation and political subdivision of the state. It's subject to all of the things as a city is subject to, relative to your open meeting and sunshine laws, your budget laws, and other governmental considerations that affect public entities. It operates as a form of local government, and it must keep its facilities open to the public, which is much different than an HOA. So the service plan and formation, the service plan, again, is the operative document for the district. It goes through a process relative to its approval. It sets forth all of the types of powers and authorizations that the district is going to have. It's submitted to the governing body for purposes of consideration. So we have submitted a draft to the city that is considered by the city as part of a public hearing process. So notice is required for that public hearing, both to all of the property owners as well as taxing entities within a three-mile radius, and it's also published. The City Council, once it considers that at a public hearing, has the authorization to either approve the service plan, to disapprove the service plan, or to approve it with conditions. Assuming that the jurisdiction approves it, we go to the district court and we ask the court to allow us to hold an election. Because of restrictions of Tabor, we are only allowed to hold a Tabor election in November of even-numbered years or odd-numbered years, or we can, in even-numbered years, in May, hold a Tabor election. That Tabor election authorizes both taxation as well as the incurrence of debt by that special district. Assuming the election passes, we go back to the court, and the court will order the organization of that district. Once the order is actually recorded on the property, the district becomes legally effective as a matter of law. So again, the governing body of the special district is a board of directors. They are actually elected. So directors have to be eligible electors. That's a defined term under Title 32. So they have to be registered to vote in Colorado. Unlike business improvement districts, they have to be individuals that sit on this board, and they have to have a taxable property ownership within the district. They're elected by a majority vote of all other eligible electors in the district. They are publicly accountable. So as I said before, they have to hold open meetings, they have to maintain minutes, all other records for public inspection, so just like the city, there are open records laws that govern the district. They have to hold elections for the governing board in May of even-numbered years. There's been some recent legislation that's going to change that schedule a little bit, starting in 2023, but again, it's going to be every other year that those elections are held. We are required to adopt annual budgets, and they have to have independent financial audits on an annual basis. Relative to how people know if they're in a special district, so under real estate law, Section 38, or Title 38, requires a notice in every single contract that is issued for the purchase of property, that you could be in with the boundaries of the special district. As you go through that closing process, you also get a title commitment, which will show you all of the encumbrances on the property, one of which shows up as an order for that metropolitan district that's recorded against the property. Additionally, you will get a certificate of taxes. So to the extent that district has actually levied taxes against the property, that will show up on the certificate of taxes. In most of the service plans we work with, governing jurisdictions also require an additional disclosure to be recorded on the property and to be provided to potential purchasers as they start to close on the property. That is a disclosure that sets forth some of the generalities of the service plan that the district's authorized to do, as well as what that ultimate financial authorization is. So as you move into a community with a special district, that potential purchaser knows exactly what the financial ramifications or their encumbrance is going to be as a result of living in that community. In terms of financial authorization for a district, again, that's governed by Title 32, the service plan, and ultimately that Tabor election that I was talking about a little bit earlier. Title 32 authorizes various sources of revenues for districts. So they can levy and collect property taxes. This is both for purposes of any bonds that have to be discharged for purposes of both principal and interest. They can also levy for purposes of general operations or administrative types of purposes. So to the extent there are operation and maintenance responsibilities that a district undertakes, that would be part of the general operation, the levy. They can also fix and increase fees, rates, tolls, penalties, and charges subject to the service plan, and they can issue both general obligation or revenue bonds for financing. General obligation bonds are those that are supported by property taxes, and revenue bonds are those that are supported by other types of revenues. In terms of property tax collection, I thought this might be helpful, but this shows how it's calculated. I've assumed a $450,000 home. It is assessed at a current rate of 7.2%, which gives you the assessed valuation of $32,400, in which case the homeowner would pay slightly under $2,000 towards 60 mils that would be imposed for debt service by the district. Commercial property is assessed slightly differently. It's at 29% of market value as opposed to that 7.2%. So in terms of the service plan that we are proposing for Yarrow Gardens, the intent is to provide for and finance some of the onsite and offsite public improvements. There are streets, including offsites for 42nd and Yarrow Street, wet utilities, storm drainage, landscaping. The district would also be responsible for maintaining certain improvements that aren't otherwise dedicated to the city or another governmental entity. These would include things like landscaping, snow removal. As I stated before, we are also proposing that the district be authorized to be the entity that proposes or provides covenant and architectural control. We've found that streamlining those types of services through a single entity is often very helpful for homeowners, so they have a streamlined point of contact for anything involving their community. It also cuts down on administrative costs that they would otherwise have to pay for two separate entities. This is a financial summary for purposes of the service plan that's been submitted to you. So we're proposing a debt cap, i.e., the district would not be able to issue any debt above $6 million without coming back to the City Council for what's called a service plan amendment. That also requires a public hearing before you under the same set of circumstances and notices that would be required for the original service plan. We're proposing a debt service mil levy cap of 60 mils for debt service until that debt is below 50% of the total assessed valuation. That's kind of a statutory threshold that the legislature has set forth in terms of when the market rate, or when the market risk actually drops off. The mil levy cap would adjust as the residential assessment ratio is adjusted through the state. That's called the Gallagher Amendment. And so we've seen, and this hasn't been done in quite some time until just recently, that assessment ratio has declined from 7.96% to 7.2% in 2017. The majority of districts, in order to ensure that they are paying their debt with a constant source of revenue, are allowed to ratchet their mil levy up based upon that same ratio of adjustment. So that's what we're proposing here as well. We have a maximum permitted term allowable for the debt service mil levy to be imposed of 40 years. Again, unless we come back to you for a service plan amendment, or that district is run by homeowners that live in the community, we cannot exceed a 40-year term on the debt. There's no operating mil levy cap, so for purposes of the district, any of those operation and maintenance duties could be funded through a property tax for operation and maintenance or through fees or charges that are imposed on the homeowners. Again, to the extent the homeowner association is supplanted with a district, the homeowners are paying the same amount for purposes of architectural and covenant control. The difference is going to be the operation and maintenance that this community is required to undertake. So the district revenues, again, are going to fund administrative costs, operation and maintenance, parks and landscaping, some sidewalks and open areas, any debt service requirements associated with bonds that are issued for public improvements, as well as covenant control. In the service plan, there is a document called a financing plan, and that financing plan sets forth how we think that debt is going to be incurred by the district based upon the current projections of development in the area and those assessed valuations that are derived from development. So we are proposing, as part of that financing plan and projecting, that initial debt will be issued in December of 2018 of about $3.5 million, which generates about $2.5 million to pay project improvements. And then in December of 2028, we're thinking that a refunding is going to happen of the original debt with a slightly decreased interest rate and an additional potential project funding of about $1.9 million. That would, of course, be subject to any additional public improvements that would be eligible for that funding. So that is really all I have. I would be happy to answer any questions, and like I said, we have a developer representative. Please, send any questions about development itself.
Thank you very much. Questions from council?
Mr. Dahl is here also to answer any legal questions that you may have.
Mr. Pond? Mr. Pond?
Appreciate the presentation, I guess. One question I would have is the extent that we have similar constructs, metropolitan districts in of this variety and agreements like this. I'd be curious to hear about them.
You asked similar, are there similar metropolitan districts we have in the community? Yeah, the city, it's very timely because I'm working on your packet for next Monday and you're going to get a very thick packet with a amended and restated Longs Peak Metropolitan District Service Plan, which was originally approved in 2006 for what at that time was the Cabela's Project. So they're bringing it back into the to the city council to amend that to be more relevant for the the current Clear Creek Crossing Project. So that was the first metropolitan district that I'm aware of that the city had approved. The second one was done in, I believe, 2011, and it was for the Jolly Rancher property at our Ward TOD station area. That's about a 15-acre site. There's been no no developments in place at that time, as you know, but the metropolitan district is still in is still in a plan. And council approved that service plan also. So those are the two metropolitan districts and service plans that have been in front of city council. Dan, to your question?
Yeah, I think generally and more specifically, I guess I would ask that that those are both, I think, in mixed-use areas and have a blend of commercial and residential. And I'm just trying to understand, this one is similar mix or it's mostly or all residential?
This one's all residential. The Longs Peak, yes, you're correct, it's going to be, it's a mixed use. The Jolly Rancher, I believe it's actually called the Ward TOD Metropolitan District, that at this point is being proposed for primarily residential also with a small amount of commercial. There's a Toll Brothers has a development for some townhomes and a small amount of live-work units and some commercial that I think we updated council on recently. So that's a little bit different. Yeah, both are different. This one would be strictly residential.
Okay, so then if I'm interpreting this right, then once all of the it's developed and all the residences are sold, all of the entire metropolitan board will be made up of homeowners in that area? And the collateral on all of this debt and everything else will be, in fact, those homes and properties?
Correct.
Ms. Davis?
So I have just a couple of questions or I want to get a little clarification because I do think this is a little bit different beast than what we've seen before. But so I guess, and this might be a question for you, the 40 years, after 40 years or the 50% of 40 years, the then the mils, they were at, I think, 40 mils? Then where do they drop to?
So there's about 55 mils that are in the financing plan that are contemplated to be used to discharge the debt. Assuming that we have no residents on the board at that time, okay, worst case, no residents are on that board, the district would be prohibited from imposing any further mill levy for debt at that point in time. So the bonds would have to discharge completely if they're not paid at that point. If there are residents on the board and the residents control that board at 40 years, they can make a determination to refund debt that's currently in existence, assuming that there's some sort of cost savings associated with that.
So I guess, I guess part of my question is, is, you know, you think of like the regular HOA and, you know, a lot of this stuff was, you know, landscaping and those types of things. And so you kind of understand that 40 years or, you know, I mean, that's a long time to hold debt. And then the thing is, is that a lot of those 55 mils or 40 mils or, you know, whatever's decided is going towards a debt service and and all of the landscaping and those types of things. But I guess at one, at what point, like if I was a homeowner, and maybe this is just a stupid question, but if I was a homeowner, I'd be like, hey, you don't have any debt anymore. Why am I still paying 55 mils? I just want you to pick up my trash and mow my lawn.
No, it would not be 55 mils. So again, we have to separate the budget, just like at the city level, there is a budget for debt where there's a property tax that would be imposed by the district. That's what drops off at 40 years, okay? That's the mill levy. 55 mils imposed for debt service drops off at year 40. The district still has what's called a general fund. We're proposing about eight mils in the general fund supplanted by fees that would be paid by the homeowners for operation, maintenance, administration, covenant control. So that would go on for so long as those homeowners or residents had the obligation, first of all, to operate and maintain that stuff. And second of all, to the extent that they could do so through that eight mils and/or fees and charges.
And then I guess one, one other question is, so I know it said there's an election and, you know, it would go to the people, the property owners and et cetera, et cetera, but right now there's only one property owner. So goodie for me, I get a vote in that I'm going to impose 55 mils on, you know, 78 people that are going to build this is kind of how I see it. And then I guess then, from what you also said, which I'm just kind of trying to clarify because I'm right down the street from this, is that the next thing is, is when these people buy these places, it's full disclosure, right? So it's like, hey, by the way, you're going to be imposed another 50 mils. It has nothing to do with the city, so to speak. It's about the infrastructure of your new environment and your new home. And after so many years and 50%, we could change that and please become a member of the board and all of those types of things. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. So the disclosure that is prepared in the context of the service plan requirement is going to be subject to the city's review. So your city attorney will review it as well as your staff. But that's intended to give homeowners full disclosure about what the district's financial authorization is going to be, how long they could potentially be paying a mill levy for debt service, and what the other obligations or requirements are of the district for purposes of operation and maintenance. So they get all of that information. So the other types of information that they get are not that elaborate when you sign your contract to purchase. It's really just a disclosure, hey, look out, you might be in a special district. As you get your title commitment, you know, there's an order recorded on the property. But again, it's not what that district is fully authorized to do. So this additional disclosure is intended to provide exactly that information.
Okay. And then, let's say, so I know it said that it's up to the 50%. Let's say 36 get built and oops, something happens. And so again, my understanding is you only could assess up to 55 mils. So even if you're like, oh, sorry for you guys, you know, we didn't build the rest and we have all this debt service, you know, pony up. Like what types of backup are there for those types of things? To protect the residents because they don't know?
Yep. So the protection to the residents is really what we've tried to do is put the debt of the district and its financial authorization in a box so that those residents know exactly what they're going to be responsible for. So we have a debt limit. District can't issue more than that amount of debt, $6 million. We have a debt cap or a debt mill levy cap totaling 60 mils. District can't issue more than that for purposes of the debt. And then we also have the 40-year term that's associated with that debt mill. District can't exceed that or the debt has to discharge unless that resident board authorizes some sort of refunding. So that's what we try to do is make it very clear what the risk to residents are going to be and what their ultimate encumbrance on the property, I'll call it an encumbrance, but what their responsibilities are for the district.
Okay, and then two more questions. So I know you had made something, you had made a comment about the ordinances and how you guys would like to maintain your own ordinance, but that's still going to be in line, you know, especially architectural, is still going to be in line with the city. So it's still going to match the cities. It's not like all of a sudden, we're going to have all these adobe homes or something over there.
Like I said before, the district does not take away any authorization that you as a city council have for purposes of development approvals, plat subdivision improvement agreements, whatever is put in place relative to how that development looks and what improvements are required, the district has nothing to do with that. It's really just a financing vehicle and it provides services in the future.
Okay, I think that's a good line share of my questions.
Additional questions? I had one. So, does the city accrue any liability or risk with respect to this metropolitan district?
No, the city has no financial responsibility for the debt that's issued by the district. That is actually disclosed as the district issues bonds as part of preliminary offering statements. So it's made very clear in those documents, but the city incurs no liability or financial responsibility for the district.
And if the, if the district is unable to meet its financial obligations, what's the typical scenario?
Typical scenario is that that debt gets continued to pay based upon the mill levy cap. To the extent that the bondholder determines that a workout is desirable, it will come to the district and there may be a workout of some sort. Normally what we would see in that case is some sort of discount on the debt. The district cannot promise to provide anything more to the bondholder than is set forth in the service plan. So again, it's the term of the mill levy debt cap. It's the debt cap itself as well as the limitation on the amount of debt that the district can issue. That's all that's promised to the bondholder.
Okay. And in conjunction with with Tabor regulations, any taxation that the district would seek to undertake would be in the form of, would require a Tabor election?
It would. When we organize the district, we get initial Tabor authorization for purposes of taxation as well as issuance of debt. If in the future those residents want to come back and authorize a giant pool facility or something, they would have to go back and get further Tabor authorization and potentially service plan authorization for that, along with whatever approvals the city might require independent of that.
And with respect to this particular property, does the city, does the city have any sort of maintenance obligations with respect to the improvements that are that are made?
I don't know if you can, this is where I defer.
My name's Kevin Pucci, I'm with Thrive Home Builders. You all just heard our last hearing with, our last approvals with Jay, so tonight you get me, he's out of town. But first off, thanks for having us tonight. Most of the improvements, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's better.
Is that better? Okay. Most of the improvements that are going to be funded by the district would be private improvements. There are some offsites that would be city maintained, but most of this would be stuff that would be end up being maintained by an HOA or some form of entity that way.
What would be an HOA, but it's now the district?
Correct.
Okay. And so then, Mr. Goff, then do we have a, do we, you know, sort of plow the roads up to a certain point and then stop and then the district takes over?
Yeah, as long as those roads aren't dedicated to the city. Yeah, the district would would take over those, correct?
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald?
I'm looking at the baseline engineering estimate and I see a listing here for sanitary sewer. Since we're not responsible for sanitary sewer, could somebody tell me whether or not we actually get involved in that or have an expense for that? I guess they have an expense.
We don't, yeah, but the developer would, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess as we look at this mill levy currently, it's at 80 mils and with the addition of the 55, that brings it up to 135 mils just for this particular neighborhood. That concerns me in and of itself. But I guess as it relates to these offsite improvements that are made, those are improvements being made outside the district by revenue generated from the district, is that correct?
No, the only, the only improvements that we've made would be within the district.
So there are both offsites as well as onsite improvements that would be funded by the district. They're directly adjacent and of benefit to those residents and are being required as part of the development process. So those residents would pay for their portion of those costs.
And so as far as like the sanitation improvements and whatnot, why is it not the sanitation district responsible for installing those infrastructure elements?
Yeah, the developer or the city, or I guess the district, the developer is always, I guess, responsible ultimately for putting in those improvements. I misspoke, the connection would be offsite to some of those improvements.
Okay. I guess I just, you know, we already have seven layers of taxing entities on top of this property as it stands, and this would be an eighth taxing district. And so these other entities aren't able to facilitate this process. We have to create another entity to facilitate it. It just seems like overkill in my mind.
To answer your question about sanitation improvements, yeah, I mean, the development is always responsible for that. The Wazee project on 38th and Upland had to pay for their connections and up and upsize the sanitation. Same with the Weegars Corners project, had to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to make that happen. You know, in both those situations, the city agreed to public subsidies through TIF to help those projects meet some of their needs. This project is not asking for any city assistance, they're going through a metro district. So it's just a different method of funding those improvements, I guess.
Pardon, Ms. Hoppy?
So when you were giving us the presentation, you were saying the average homeowner will be paying approximately $2,000 a year in their taxes to fund this special district, right? That was your general estimate?
For purposes of the debt?
Yeah.
That's about right, yep.
So I, just one thing that I just would like to mention, so, but they, there will not also be a homeowners association fee on top of that?
That's correct. But the district will have a levy, an additional levy for operation and maintenance purposes, and it may impose a fee. But ultimately, that homeowner is going to be paying what it would pay for a homeowners association, albeit it won't have those administrative costs.
Right, yep, thank you very much.
Additional questions? Do we have, so we've gotten through this, do we have a consensus to move this forward?
So this is scheduled, Kristin and her firm is scheduling this for August 13th, public hearing still, I believe is what we have scheduled?
Yes, yes.
So that's what the timeframe is now.
Do we have consensus to bring this forward? Okay, thank you very much, we have consensus. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Mayor, can I make one comment too? Because I do believe this, this project's also coming up for public hearing next Monday, right? For the?
No, that was, I believe that was done, the meeting you were, I think June 11th, I believe was.
So is there a second reading though, this next, or was it the final one?
No, that they, everything was wrapped up at the last, the last meeting.
All right. Well, I know I gave Mr. Starker some of my questions and concerns, so I just wanted to add to that.
Thank you. Okay, we will go to item number three, the selection of the NRS Update Steering Committee. Mr. Goff?
Yeah, let me, sorry, I lost my staff memo here. Let me pull it up real quick. So, as you all know, we're proceeding with a process to update our neighborhood revitalization strategy, the 2005 report. One of the first steps is to create and then panel a steering committee. And our consultants that we've hired, CZB, have recommended some certain parameters that you should potentially look at or recommend to look at to when you're looking at putting a steering committee together. And we created an application which went out, I believe, on June 1st. Our original deadline was June 25th. We did extend that through Friday, June 29th at 5:00 p.m. We received a total of 27 applications and I provided, I emailed you and I also provided you a hard copy this evening of the updated matrix. And I provided, I emailed you and I also provided you a hard copy this evening of the updated matrix that has all twenty-seven applications on there. We did receive two more after we extended the deadline. And you also have those applications in your packet. So we, the makeup, our consultants recommended that we create a steering committee of approximately between sixteen and twenty-two members. I spoke to our consultants a couple of days ago and let them know we did receive twenty-seven. And if council chose to impanel the whole twenty-seven, would they be okay with that? Could they work with a group of that size? They said absolutely. So, keep in mind that is an option if you'd like just to accept everybody that applied. Some of the parameters that they recommended were that you try to get half women and half men on the panel. Right now, we have eighteen females and nineteen males, nine males that applied, so it's a little off there. They said it'd be good to get fifty percent homeowners, fifty percent renters. We only got homeowners who applied, no renters. Inclusion of a few business owners or executives. We did get seven of those who were either an executive at a large business in Wheat Ridge or a business owner. They said that no less than half should have moved to the community within the last ten years. And we have about fifteen that meet that parameter. At least two should have moved to the community within the last two years. We have seven who applied. And at least two who have lived in the community at least twenty-five years. And we have five that meet that parameter. They also recommended that we have at least one rental property owner. And we received two applicants that currently have rental properties in Wheat Ridge. So, again, in front of you is the matrix. We would like to bring this back on July ninth to officially impanel a committee of this group. The first meeting, kickoff meeting for the steering committee has been scheduled for July eighteenth. So, I'll just open it up for any discussion. Direction.
Mr. Pond?
Excuse me. Well, thank you. It's nice to see such a great response to this and to have all this data. And in some ways to be so close to putting together a committee like this. I guess a small pitch for just consideration as to if we want to bring this down or leave this committee at the size that it is on paper right now. And if the consultant was willing to do that, I suppose my specific in District Three perspective on that would be that that would avoid us essentially eliminating our female respondents in our district. I think if we were trying to kind of keep to the rest of the matrix and some of these things, that means we would, almost all of the females who applied, if not all of them, would have to be, would have to be removed. And I don't know that, you know, if we can keep it as robust as twenty-seven, that would certainly keep us open to what we got at least in our district.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention too, this wasn't necessarily a parameter that the consultant recommended, but I think it's important that you guys always consider this. We had four applicants in District One, nine in District Two, eight in District Three, and four in District Four. They were fairly adamant, our consultant was, that all these folks commit to being available on at least, two of the major meetings that they had scheduled, one for July eighteenth and one for September fifth. They plan on meeting monthly, but these are two of the bigger ones. And there was one applicant who wasn't able to meet one of those meeting dates. So, doesn't mean you still can't select that person, it's just that was one other parameter that they recommended.
Ms. Davis?
So, I would support if, since it does sound like the consultants don't have a problem with the twenty-seven of including all twenty-seven. I think it's a good diverse group, so I would support that. I would ask that if, it's something we don't support, because I will not be here next week, that, you know, that we at least get together if that's the case. So I can make sure if that's the case that Zach and I have equal kind of discussion of who's not going to be here. But I do feel like it's, the twenty-seven, it's too over what they recommended. And I'm guessing probably, who knows, a couple could end up with a conflict and not be able to.
Nobody knows.
Nobody knows, so I think we're close and I would recommend taking them all. And I want to thank them all, because reading through the applications, it does sound like a nice, committed, diverse group.
Ms. Hoppy?
I'm okay with going either way. I had selected nineteen, kind of felt like I was drafting my fantasy football week while I was doing that. But one thing that I would like to bring up is that I purposely didn't ask my husband to apply to this, although he would have been very good on this board. Because my concern was that he would come home from the meetings and be like, hey, we talked blah, 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 blah. And I'd be like, oh, but what, blah, blah, you know, what about this, what about that? And, you know, I kind of felt like that would spoil the broth. So, if we're going to take all twenty-seven, I would suggest we take twenty-six and thank Ms. Matthews for applying, but not put her on the committee.
Ms. Dozeman?
So, my only concern about taking all of the applicants is that it's skewed heavily towards two districts in the city as well as towards women. We have double the applicants of women than we do of men. So I do want it to be fair and like equal in our demographics. So, before Patrick had mentioned that the consultant was willing to take all twenty-seven applicants, I had kind of drafted between twenty and twenty-two, which would include taking all nine males and then eleven to thirteen females, which would include four from each district and then four to six at large. If you look at just the men, there are five men that have lived here for longer than ten years and four men that have lived here less than ten years. So that's right along the lines with our, the parameters that they gave us. And then we could choose, like I said, eleven to thirteen females within some of those parameters as well. I just, my concern is that District Two and District Three are heavily outweigh District One and Four. And if we, I don't think that we should eliminate anyone if we're going to say that we'll take all the applicants, because Carol Matthews happens to be in my district and I want my district to be represented.
Mr. Fitzgerald and then Mr. Ann?
Okay, I'm very impressed with many of the applicants, all of the applicants. And I'm really happy that so many people want to be involved in the direction of the city. And reading some of their applications, it's pretty impressive. All of these people did take time to apply and I think we should accept them all. And I don't think that, this is especially a district oriented thing, because the focus of this is the entire city, you know, what are we going to do to make our city better? So, I don't think we have the ability really to delay this, because what's going to happen if we delay it is we'll all be out, be working, trying to talk people who are kind of lukewarm about this to get involved. And so I think we have people who have expressed their interest without being whipped to get on the committee. So I think we had to accept them as an entire slate.
Thank you, Mr. Ann?
Thank you, I agree. We have twenty-seven citizens who are giving of their time to help us with our NRA here, you know, revitalizing here. So, I would like to accept all twenty-seven of them and their willingness to commit. And you mentioned there's two important meetings. I know things come up, that's life, and they may not all make all meetings. It's one a month for a year, correct, Patrick?
No.
Okay, so I think if we're gonna, I'd hate to turn anybody away. If they want to volunteer and commit, let's let them commit and volunteer and let's get all of their input.
Ms. Dozeman?
Did the consultant have or express any concerns about that large of a group?
No, no, all he said was, I just, I asked him, he said, absolutely, he could work with a group this size.
And weren't they going for twenty-five anyways?
Sixteen to twenty-two is what they recommended.
So we're not that far over.
That would be just less donuts for every individual on the committee, you know, so, Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess as we look at the neighborhood revitalization process, what type of mechanisms or methods will we use for public input, either towards this committee or towards us as a council? And how do we integrate that public input? So, individuals who are not on this committee would have a voice, would be able to suggest comments or recommendations?
Yeah, yeah, no, good question, Zach. Pretty robust, I'm sorry, I don't have that scope in front of me. But they plan on meeting with this group and Planning Commission at least three times. And I think maybe have some joint meetings with the two. Numerous focus group meetings across the community. They're asking this committee to hold small group meetings at their home or at a coffee shop. So, lots of opportunities for everybody in the community to comment.
Thank you. Additional discussion? It sounded to me like we had consensus to impanel the committee that, of twenty-seven that's been, that have volunteered. Is that consensus among the council? We'll move in that direction, thank you very much. That concludes the agenda items. We will go to staff reports. Mr. Goff?
I got another update on the status of the G Line. And I think last Friday I talked to Denver Transit Partners. And as I updated you in the past, kind of the last thing that we're waiting on is a final approval from the Federal Railroad Administration. I've sent, I emailed you a kind of a cryptic update from RTD and Denver Transit Partners. But to cut to the chase, the FRA, they have a new staff person who makes that final decision. So they need a couple extra weeks. But the good news is she's very committed to get it done. She says this needs to get done and they weren't going to let the holiday week delay it. So, it's still, any day now, the FRA is going to approve the waiver so that they can run multiple trains on the G Line to finalize the final testing. So, so no final, no dates yet on when it could open. But still, I think, I think this year, I'm hoping.
Backing off a little bit there, Mr. Goff.
September.
But I don't, you know, I don't, I don't blame you. Mr. Dahl?
Thank you. Just, I wanted to save this for an evening that was short so that I could, wouldn't be making you longer. Over the years, I have observed that as development proposals come in, usually land development proposals come into the city, many times, not many times, often, they require help from me in one way or another. You don't usually see that with big developments that have their own team of consultants and attorneys and that's great. And, you know, we had a good group, you know, they're well represented here tonight. For the smaller developments where they're kind of doing it out of the, you know, out of their back pocket of their jeans and they're doing a good job, but they've got the, you know, the few parcels, I find that they need more help. And often I'm reviewing deeds or agreements or just any range of things that the developer needs to be able to get the thing approved. But if they had a bigger staff and were just a bigger organization, they'd pay for themselves. And so the city pays that cost. And, you know, that's a cost that effectively you're subsidizing. And in many cases, you may well want to do that to encourage, you know, local development. Nevertheless, it's a cost. For most of my other municipal clients, the city adopts a rate, just like you adopt a rate for other costs that you charge people. Or rate for copies, or rate for research, or rate for plan review, whatever, up at community development. You know, they review the plans and that's a cost. And most of the cities I work in have an ordinance and a rate where I basically charge the city and then that's passed through the developer, developer pays the city, and then the city pays me. And so you don't have that subsidy. You can certainly choose to apply it or not on a case-by-case basis. But over time, in the twenty-five years I've been doing the city's work, I'm sure quite a bit of city money has gone to do development review that really, I think more properly ought to be in the private sector. It's a cost that you've been subsidizing. It's not extreme, because Wheat Ridge is basically an inner ring suburb that doesn't have a lot of big new development. You see that certainly in cities like Aurora, they pass that through all the time, because otherwise they'd be spending an enormous amount of city revenue for greenfield development. We do a lot of infill, a lot of redevelopment, but nevertheless, it does cost time and money. And very often the developers, small and especially, and I've seen this, it's a lot cheaper to reach out to me and to send something in saying, can the city attorney review this before, rather than taking it to Kristin Bear, who's terrific and I like her and we've known each other for years. But, you know, she's going to charge that person three hundred and fifty dollars an hour if he or she's lucky. And so it's, I'm a much better deal at zero. So there's that. And I've talked with Patrick about this, this is not something that's been urgent necessarily. But over the years, I've come to think that it's a policy choice that's been made kind of on your behalf, you know? And it really is your decision to make, because it is an expenditure of city money that's kind of hidden. I'm happy to show you examples of what's done, it's really pretty simple. You have a rate sheet and you say for development review, if we need to hire engineers or accountants or geotech engineers or attorneys or surveyors, then we pass that, we pay them, but we pass that cost on to you. You can always and probably plug in administrative waiver ability so that there may be projects that you don't want to pass that cost on and you want to be the subsidy. That's the issue I've been meaning to bring to you for some time and wanted to wait until there was time and I'm not taking up big time on a otherwise tough study session. Thoughts about that?
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Ragus. I would be, I would prefer some type of rate sheet or otherwise for those services. But I get, my primary question is relating to the conflict of interest or any type of situation where you're representing the city versus representing the developer's interest. And how is that conflict either acknowledged and/or handled?
Fair question, good question. All of the time, it's something that would come to the city for review, that we'd have to be seeing. And instead of them having done a very good job of it with their own staff, it's something that if they hired Kristin Bear, she'd write it and then she'd send it to me. And then I'm wearing my city attorney hat. I would review it and it would take a tenth of the amount of time that it would take to review something that hadn't been very well done. So to answer your question, no, I'm never representing the private developer. But the amount of time I would take reviewing documents and sometimes suggesting, you know, you're missing this whole thing, the city needs this, here's an example. That kind of time wouldn't be charged for. And so I'm not worried, I'm glad you asked the question. And I'm always a little, I'm always very careful that I'm not, who am I giving advice to here? And it needs to always be the city. But typically, it's stuff that they just didn't do a very good job of writing up. And if Kristin Bear did it, I'd be sending her the same comments. But instead, it's me doing those comments.
Thank you. Other thoughts? Mr. Fitzgerald?
As you indicated in your preface there, we are a fully developed city almost and we're not going to have any other major developments. So almost everybody who comes to us is going to be a small infill developer. So, I don't really see that we're going to have a lot of applications for this in the future. And we certainly ought to have a cutoff for the point at which the developer has to do it on their own. But in my mind, I would just let this go.
To that point, I will tell you that ever since I've been working for the city, it's been an inner ring suburb that's largely been contained. I get it that there was the project on Fifty-Eighth that got annexed in the mid-nineties, I think. You know, we've had the Cabela's project, which is in a completely different, you know, universe in terms of what, you know, you could charge them, but at the same time turn around and look at the city subsidy going, that's kind of like not worth it. But throughout... look at the city subsidy going, and it's kind of like, not worth it. But throughout that time, there's, oh, half a dozen times a year, there's a development project that comes in with more than just a couple units. And, you know, the, the projects that have taken time consistently, year after year, have been infill, and some, you know, were the, um, greenhouses that have gone away. And all of a sudden, now you've got 10 acres, and that really can support a pretty significant, for Wheat Ridge, residential development that frankly is at a level that, that they need to be funding that themselves, really. The, the number of units involved. Euro Gardens, I'm glad they came in, because that's, you know, we'll see more of those in redevelopment. Uh, it's absolutely your call. It's the, no difference to me in terms of my effort, but it is a cost the city's experiencing. And I do think that it's legitimate to say that there's more than just your mom and pop developer who's lived in Wheat Ridge forever and has two acres. You know, the, the developers you see aren't really that, are they? They're, they came in and bought 10 acres from mom and pop, and they're from Greenwood Village, and they're developing it. I mean, that's, that's just what we've seen. We see it all the time. You know, and, and good for them. There's no pejorative intent, but you know, the, do you pay for that?
Ms. Hoppy.
I suppose like in, in, on one end of the realm, there's services that, um, that you get, that's kind of a bonus of working with a smaller community, which would be that, you know, you can send that over to the attorney, the attorney will give you notes and send it back. But then on the other end, it's kind of, is it being taken advantage of? And so I, I wonder if there's, if anybody would, um, support perhaps, that you come back to us with some, some, with some reports or some evidence that say, "Look, this is typically the size of development. This is how much money, or how much time I spend on it. It's how much money it's, it's costing," and, and we could perhaps come up with a threshold. I, I personally feel like it's, you know, that's a nice thing for us to do for like some of the smaller people, like you said, doing it out of their jean pockets. But then again, once it starts getting to a realm where it's more in the medium size to large, I, I think that they should be paying for that as one of their costs of doing business. So, um, I was just going to ask if there's a consensus to ask Mr. Dahl to bring us back some information on that, so we can decide our threshold on it?
Would, would you think that we could also include in that sort of what, a, a paragraph or two that we might be able to give out to developers when they come in for a pre-app? Sort of an expectation, we expect you to have professional, you know, architecture, engineering, surveying, design services, legal counsel, and, and all of the, the, the team, you know, that, there's an expectation of our city that you come in with, you know, ready to do business and with your own, you know, set of, set of advisors?
Sure. I, I can add that, and I think Councilmember Hoppy's point is a good one. You know, because we have apples and oranges here in terms of ability to pay and, and the city's social policy desire to help or not. And the, and, and, and I think it's fair to get the information, be able to make that distinction. Happy to do that. Thanks.
And I would, I'd like to sort of maybe close with one thing, that I think it's, and I know that Mr. Dahl and I have worked on one in, in the recent past, and it's, it's good, I think, for our city to be, to, to have a willingness to work with developers and with, you know, and not just the great big guys that have a huge professional staff, but they, but the people that are coming in, that are, uh, that are bringing, bringing business and commerce to our, to our city, to, to have an effort to work with them, so.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl. Is that it on your staff reports?
It is.
All right. Well, I will open this up for elected officials' reports. Um, Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to wish everyone a happy Independence Day and give everyone a reminder that all fireworks, including sparklers and fountains, are illegal within city limits. And so we respectfully ask you and encourage you to go enjoy one of the, uh, local shows, either at Arvada, Lakewood. Denver has several, but, uh, please be respectful of your neighbors and not light off fireworks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Additional, uh, comments from elected staff? Seeing none, thank you. We will adjourn.